Yeah, I gotta remember to do this, too. I know. Okay, that must be how it works. She said make sure it's on.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of February 22nd, 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items, 4.1B, Use Permit 23001, and 4.2, Use Permit 56G. Any aggrieved person may appeal planning, final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 8th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So move, Campbell.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes. Thank you.
Approved, 9-0.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jennifer to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jennifer, will you please call the items on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, please note that Item 1.2 CPC 23001 is being removed from the consent agenda for a request for a two-week deferral. First item for consent is 1.2 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23002, to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan with the Northwest 48th Redevelopment Area Redevelopment Plan, a proposed guide for redevelopment activities within the redevelopment plan area, consisting of 815 acres generally bound by Northwest 56th Street on the west, North Wilkins Street on the north, Northwest 40th Street on the east, and West Holdridge on the south, and including the Northwest 48th Apartments Redevelopment Project with approximately 289 apartment units on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. Item 1.4 Change of Zone 23003 from AG Agricultural District to I-1 Industrial District to allow for additional storage and staging of construction materials on property generally located at North 70th Street and McCormick Drive. Planning Commission members received a staff memo dated February 22nd of 2023 identifying revisions to conditions of approval agreed upon by staff and the applicant. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information that you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
I don't see any, no.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on these consent agenda items? Please stand and state the item.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
Motion approved, 9-0.
Thank you. I will now ask Jennifer to call the requests for deferral.
We received written communication from the applicant regarding requesting a deferral until the next Planning Commission hearing of Item 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23001, to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment on the North 27th Street Corridor and Environment's Redevelopment Plan to identify the 27th and Star redevelopment project, which will redevelop two properties within, with a 12-unit apartment building, three townhomes, and associate parking on the property generally located at the northeast corner of North 27th and Star Street, which will delay the public hearing and action to March 8th, 2023, Planning Commission hearing.
Move, move deferral until March 8th, 2023?
Second, Campbell.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
And Egerton?
Yes.
We also received written communication on behalf of the applicant requesting, oh, sorry, motion approved, 9-0. We requested, we also received requested written communication on behalf of the applicant requesting that agenda item 2.1 Text Amendment 23001, amending the Lincoln Municipal Code Title 26 relating to form of the Street Tree Plan and Cash Buyout Requirements. Text Amendment 23001 be placed on pending until further noticed.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
You said 2.1, but was that 1.3?
No, I have 2.1.
You have 2.1. Okay, I must be wrong on this. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
Motion approved, 9-0.
Okay, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these applications today? Or do you have one more?
One more.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. And in addition, so in addition, staff is recommending a six-week deferral for Item 4.3, that is miscellaneous 23001, to revoke existing special permit 21005 on property generally located at 22500 South 176th Street for miscellaneous 23001.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz? Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
And approved, 9-0.
Okay, now, is there anyone who wishes to testify today on any of the items that were deferred until a later date? You certainly can do that today instead of testifying at the actual hearing date if you so choose. Seeing none? What should we do now? Let's see. Let's go to public hearings. Okay. We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jennifer, please call the first public hearing item.
4.1A Commissioner Edens is declared to conflict of interest on Item 4.2 Use Permit 56G on today's public hearing agenda and therefore will recuse herself from voting on that item.
It's really Item 4.1? Your orders, your numbers are out of order on your script.
Okay, but where are we at? We're on 4.1?
No, we're on 4.1.
1A?
It's at 4.2.
But I think that's the one.
Which one do you have a conflict of interest on?
The North 27th Use Permit 56G.
Okay, 4.2.
So we're not on that yet, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so 4.1A Change of Zone 23001 from R2 Residential District to O2 Business District to O3 Business District to add office space and associated parking on property generally located at 5025 Garland Street and associated Use Permit 23001 to allow office space and associated parking on generally located at 5025 Garland Street, the Planning Commission action is final unless appealed to the Lincoln City Council. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information that you learned while visiting any of the site to be disclosed?
No.
Emma Martin, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is a combined request for a change of zone from O2 suburban office district and R2 residential to O3 office park and a use permit matching the same boundary for property generally located at 502, 5025 Garland Street. So you can see here, 5025 Garland Street is the existing premises for the Child Advocacy Center, and they are hoping to bring these two properties in to their use permit. These requests seek to change the zone, oh, excuse me, the, the request for the O3 Office Park is to, excuse me, the O3, the proposed O3 zoning will allow the existing Child Advocacy Center to expand its services and provide increased support, and the use permit is, would allow the, the existing Child Advocacy Center to create offices on two properties and a associated parking lot on the third. The proposed additional buildings would be built on 5103 Garland Street and have 3,500 square feet to create a total of 21,000 square feet for all the buildings and will house more Child Advocacy Center staff and provide training and office uses. The expansion is requested because there is, excuse me, the expansion was requested as there was not enough space in the existing Child Advocacy Center for the services that they provide, and they are hoping to improve their, their services by expanding their office space. The office space will also include a new parking lot at 5100 Colby Street, which would be used for, which would have 21 new stalls, and the existing house on the property, which is owned by the Child Advocacy Center, would be torn down. The existing conditions of 5100 Colby Street and 5103 Garland Street can be shown and, can be seen in the exhibits attached to the staff report, and which can also, excuse me, and to ensure that the center will not disrupt the character appearance of the neighborhood, the exterior of the new office will be designed to look like a single-family home. This will create a more discreet space that will be beneficial to those that the center supports and the neighborhood as a whole. The exterior will match the existing office space across the street, which is designed to look like a residence. And the developer will also complete the paving of North 51st Street from Colby Street and, to Garland Street. And currently, North 51st Street is a gravel road, as can be seen in exhibit, existing conditions for, and the developer will also pave the sidewalks along both sides of North 51st Street when the road is paved. The Planning Department recommends conditional approval for the use permit and approval for the change of zone. Any questions?
Go ahead, Tracy.
Is Colby Street east of 51st, is that paved?
I can't remember. I'm sorry, I don't know.
I don't think it is.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be paved.
I know the, the west portion isn't, but I didn't know about the east portion.
No, no, it is not.
And so the Child Advocacy Center will own the property from Garland Street to Colby, or own Garland Street to Colby Street, and then that whole side of the block will be part of the redevelopment?
Yes, they currently own both of those sites already. They want to bring that into a use permit with their existing site to improve their, their services.
So the paving's 51st Street, though, not Colby, Colby Street?
No, it is not.
Got it.
Is there a reason that they would need to pave 51st Street? Is it access for them? Is that the issue? Because otherwise, they could tie the whole property together by asking to vacate it.
That it is access for them to get to that parking lot that will be on Colby Street as well as on-street parking?
And it looks like they have refuse removal in the back of the building there along 51st Street.
On the, for the existing Child Advocacy Center?
I'm sorry?
For the existing area?
Yes. The right to the north, behind, behind the L-shaped building.
I can't answer that. I, I don't know the status of the garbage removal there.
Okay.
On-street parking makes sense. Emma, do you know, I kind of made an assumption because I didn't, I drive by here, obviously, since I don't know if it's paved for gravel, but on the west side of South 50th Street, that's like park maintenance facilities for the park there, is that right?
On the west side of 51st or 52nd?
Well, in between, like, like right south of Colby Street and...
I, I'm not aware of the, the purposes of that area, sorry.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So, yes, on this particular map down here is a Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility, which is one of the reasons that 51st Street couldn't be vacated, because that was one of the things that was discussed early on, actually well before Emma started here, this project's been under discussion for well over a year, and that also some of the residents in the neighborhood use 51st Street to get down to Colby even though Colby is unimproved. So as a part of this project, the Child Advocacy Center will be paving 51st Street and the alley that, the portion of the alley that they're using, but the rest of Colby Street will be unchanged by this. They're not actually taking access to Colby, so we're not requiring them to take, to do any paving on Colby because they're not taking access to it. Most of their clients will probably come and go to the north and then over to 48th Street, or maybe take Garland down to 56th Street. Fewer people will be heading south onto Colby.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Testimony from the applicant.
Hello, Matt Langston with Olson, 601 P Street. So, we realize that we are encroaching into the residential area with our project, but we're very cognizant of that, and as such, you can see the depiction of what we're proposing. So it'll look residential in nature. That way, we're not disturbing the neighborhood or changing the feel of it. Colby Street, to clarify, Colby Street is an unimproved street, it's gravel, and we are also going to be putting sidewalks along it as part of this process.
Along Colby Street?
Along Colby Street, yes.
Great.
I guess...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you clarify, I think it was just a typo in the staff report, but is LPS a part of this facility?
I think it was LPD.
Okay, because I was a little confused, like, it said, like, LPS all of a sudden had taken over, and I was like, um, okay.
No, neither one is. LPD was going to be moving in this building, but that changed.
But they already are in the, the building that's complete right now?
Correct, yes.
And taking up more space, which is why you need some more space here?
Exactly, yes.
I'm, I'm never a big proponent of tearing down existing housing stock, so I'm wondering, I mean, even though you need this building for offices, what is the condition of the house that you're tearing down? Could you turn that into offices instead of just scrapping it?
I am 99% sure that house is already gone.
Oh, okay.
No? Okay. I do not know.
Okay, so, I mean, is there any way, I mean, did you guys look at, feasibly looking at just turning that into offices instead of?
So that is not enough space for us, and as you can see, we're using that south lot as the parking lot.
Right, just kind of flipping?
Right, and so, yeah, there's just not enough room in the house for their needs.
Great. So in terms of the existing building and, and then the new structure that's contemplated here, will there be, is there any division of services that are offered in the existing building versus the new structure, or how, how, how is that fitting together?
Sure, currently, what they're planning, new office building, will simply be for staff.
Okay.
And all the services will still be rendered at the other, at the original building.
Excellent. And as part of your, as part of this plan and moving forward with it, have there been conversations in the neighborhood with existing neighbors, and what has any feedback been from, from neighbors that you know of?
Sure, we actually did have a neighborhood meeting last night. We had zero people show up, and I believe Emma said that one person did call that was just a general inquiry and didn't have any issue with it.
Okay.
I'm curious, did you have the meeting via Zoom or in-person or both?
It was an in-person meeting at the, at church, it's about a block away.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Other questions for the applicant?
How big is that current building you're putting in?
The, how big is the current building?
Not, the, the new one you're going to build.
The new one, that's 3,000 square feet. So it's not going to be a hulking stature that, that'll damage the neighborhood.
The existing building is not anywhere, I mean, there's no way that it's like 3,000.
Just for information, LPD is in that south building that is, was added on the main property. South portion of the main building.
For anybody who's interested, the current building is 1,400 some square feet.
The house they're tearing down, yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any testimony in support? Testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Any additional questions for staff? Okay, I'll offer you the opportunity to rebut nothing that has been said, so we're good? Awesome, yeah.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Dick.
Second, Joy.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
I would move to approve Change of Zone 23001.
Second?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. That was Joy.
Discussion, and we can discuss both items at once.
Child advocacy has been, doing a tremendous job in this community, and the addition of the police division that works with children's issues, tying right with them is just a great asset, and so I think their expansion with the new additional office space and additional parking is very sound. Yeah, and I believe the building design and location was very well done, so appreciate you adopting to the community from a placement perspective.
I, this is a very important service for our community, and, and I, I'm glad that they're expanding so that they're, they're being used. This will be a nice campus when it's done, and I really appreciate that they're going to make this office building look like a house, so it blends in with the neighborhood. That's, that's very nice.
Right.
I just wanted to reiterate what Tracy just said, that they made it look like a house, and I'm, I'm not a proponent, as she is not, of tearing down existing housing stock, and it's nice to see that at least you're putting something that looks like a house, and maybe it someday could be converted back if need be, if that ever came up. Child advocacy is a great resource in our community, and appreciate that it's being supported enough to expand.
Yep, I agree. I also appreciate the infrastructure improvements that the applicant is putting in as a result of this project, and I will certainly approve. Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
9-0.
Anyone want to move on Use Permit 23001?
Move approval of Use Permit 23001. Core?
Second, Edens?
Uh, go ahead.
Second, Edens. Jennifer, do you want to call the vote, please?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
9-0.
parking, if the access lanes and roads are 20 feet or greater in width, the, no additional parking for the storage cubicles will be required, so the removal of this parking, because this is currently existing parking, so the removal of that parking is not an issue in this case as the drive aisles are wider than 20 feet in this site plan. The project area is located in the 100-year floodplain, and most of the mini warehouse storage units are also within that Salt Creek levy, the Salt Creek levy, 500-foot critical levy area. The applicant is working with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Watershed Management to develop a solution for watershed and critical levy storage. As of this report, there has been no, no conclusion on that, but they are working with them. The Planning Department recommends conditional approval, and, yeah.
So then that conditional approval is conditioned upon a, reaching a satisfactory agreement with regard to those issues?
There is, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Questions for Emma? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applicant testimony? It's like your day.
Matt Langston, 601 P Street, Olson. So this is the site of the former ShopCo that was up there. Two years ago, I believe, two, three years ago, Menards bought out that property, and they're using that building currently as half storage, or storage for Menards itself, and the other is controlled self-storage. So the way, as fast as that filled up, they thought that a great use for that front parking lot would just be to put in more self-storage. Through this project, we are opening up about 1.2 acres that is currently paved that will be grass. We are working with Watershed Management. I talked to them this morning, and they said they didn't see any issues that we couldn't get past, so...
Okay.
We're not, we're fine with being...
Comfortable with the conditional approval on this?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Are there additional questions for Emma or the applicant? Okay, we'll take a motion.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Core.
Jennifer?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
9-0.
Anyone want to move on Use Permit 23001?
Move approval of Use Permit 23001, Core.
Second, Edens.
Go ahead.
Second, Edens. Jennifer, do you want to call the vote, please?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Egerton?
Yes.
9-0.
Anyone want to move on Use Permit 23001?
Move approval of Use Permit 23001, Core.
Second, Edens.
Go ahead.
Second, Edens. Jennifer, do you want to call the vote, please?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?